Previously during the investigation, these puppies are making me go to another town in the Boondocks again.
I didn't think you'd keep me waiting in the rain for so long.
Welcome to Greendale. I'm the sheriff.
Greendale!
Call me George.
There's definitely something in this town. Do you feel it, Zack? My cough warned me about it. Do you feel it, Zack?
Hello, hello, check, check, check. It's me, Johnny Newsbox, and I'm here again with Deadly Premonition. We've got forty minutes to kill. But honestly, I'm pretty sure we can just jump in. Or we could buy, like, black coffee for thirty-one fifty and milk coffee for thirteen fifty. What else we got? Lollipops and crackers? Get your twenty-five dollar lollipops. So last time, we did a bunch of side quests, met some new people, and, uh... Now, here we are, doing our thing. Donna's sleeping in the bed over there. It's nighttime.
Zack, Emily arranged for people to come between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred. We can't do anything here right now. Let's come back at the right time.
Hey, it's Jack and Gina. Everyone is waiting, but it's like, nah, man, you can't. Oh, it looks like Becky's still at home. Well, I assume Becky's at home. Might not be Becky at Becky's house. Usha and Freckles McGee. Polly's not here. I don't know. I don't trust it.
Zack, Emily arranged for people to come between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred. We can't do anything here right now. Let's come back at the right time.
Ah, those children are still over there. Well, I guess I showed up too early. Where should I go? If I'm... If I leave and come back, where will I go to? I guess I could go to the diner again. This is kind of a rough mechanic, huh? Well?
Zack, Emily arranged for people to come between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred.
God damn it!
We can't do anything here right now. Let's come back at the right time.
You could've at least, like, kept my car. Like, kept me in my car. That would've been nice. Fuck, man. Well, what's this car like? Let's go! Hey, there's Sally. Maybe I should go hang out with Sally. Fuck, man.
So, where shall we go next?
I think that's the town, and I think I can just go straight through this. Studio Great Valley. Holy shit. Shit. Look, I boxed them in.
Zack, is there something here that you want to check out? We need to be at the community center by fifteen hundred today. Just think of talking in front of all those people. What do you think, Zack? It's going to get fun.
It is going to get fun. Let's peek through the window here. Wouldn't that be fucked if, like, someone walked up to the window?
Zack, we can take a rest if you'd like.
Oh, I'm pretty sure Sally Graham's in her car. Let's see. June Bridge? I sure hope it does. Those kids are still hanging out at the house. I'm pretty sure this is not the correct way. Yeah, this is the correct way. A suspect. Let's... Why do they have so many cars on the road if there are so few people who live in town? Like, this is supposed to be a meeting of all of the people in town, but like, clearly, there are lots of people going. Also... For a game that cares so much about, like, the rules of the road, that it includes, like, blinkers and windshield wipers, headlights, and all of that. Like... I don't really understand what that is. Oh.
Nothing. Just my imagination.
Woo! My god, he's a robot! Come here, friend. Man, they really fucked with us, where they were just like, "Yeah, there's a very limited amount of time where you can actually go and visit people, but then all of them are going to be leaving to go to that place that you have to be." But they're gonna start doing that really early and just stand around for, like, an hour. Come on, eight more minutes. I know this probably isn't the most riveting thing in the world, guys, but like... Honestly, the way I always... I wanna do this is, I don't like that format of where you just, oh, you skip over all the boring stuff, like... Whoa. Like, this is just the experience of playing this game, where apparently you can't skip stuff. I wanna go swimming in the pool. And it's kind of fucked up that I can't talk to these people yet, but it is what it is. Thank you, girls. We'll drink from the Superman mug and wait. Wait with Keith. Hmm? Dude. What the fuck? Emily! Why are they leaving? Wait, guys, I'm here. We made it. Welcome to Greendale. The Superman mug. It sits there. Drinking some water, too.
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary school. I'm not some tree in the wind this time either. That was a tough role, and more as a piece of scenery. Bright red tree.
Thank you all for coming today. Getting right down to business. Agent Morgan, from the Federal Bureau of Investigations, wishes to speak with you.
Huzzah!
Good afternoon. I'm Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Some of you are already aware by now of the tragic murder of Anna Graham. Truly a heinous, terrible crime. I've come to this town to solve the murder of this young, beautiful girl. And to bring the one responsible to justice.
Yeah, let's just talk more about how young and beautiful she is, I guess. It's not weird.
Unfortunately, incidents like these have a tendency to happen again. I asked to have you gathered here so I could share some advice in order to minimize the risk of further fatal incidents. Firstly, please, stay away from any dark, dangerous, isolated places. Those of you with children, especially Anna's age, please, guide her children away from such places at all costs. Secondly, avoid going out when it is raining. Now I've heard the folklore of our story, that the rain can kill you. There is a chance that the murderer is mimicking the story. Women should also be especially careful. I would hate to see more victims.
There's our stiletto lady.
Who's the fashionably lady?
That's Kara, Thomas's sister. She owns a ladder. Thomas's sister.
It was Thomas's sister all along.
Excuse me. So, as I have said, avoid going outside when it is raining. Young women should be especially careful. Report anything or anyone suspicious immediately. The murderer will be caught and brought to justice. But you must all remain on guard until we do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
It's definitely...
When paying for our sins, we must not frown. The loss of honor was for that debt.
Oh, cool. He's here to antagonize everyone. I guess, Jesus.
When purple fog covers our town, we'll all wander in hell, I predict. So says Mr. Stewart.
Sure knows how to steal thunder.
Well then, Zack, let's ask some questions before all these guys leave.
Yeah. Hey, Thomas, enjoying the thing?
Agent York, your words really made me think about Anna's death again. How could one do such a terrible thing? I'm still in shock.
Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo? I do, actually, but why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What? Now? Here?
Yes, please. This is vital for our investigation.
What kind of tattoo does Thomas have on his back?
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
Thomas, show us your tattoo.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that, did it tell you anything?
It told me that you didn't kill Anna. Of course not. What are you saying?
You wanna see that tattoo, Zack? A big heart with an arrow through it and "love G" in the center.
Why couldn't they just have shown it?
We've all been through the eighties.
What? What is that? Oh, god.
Quite a performance. Mysterious, very poetic. But I don't think many of your audience appreciated it.
Mr. Francis York Morgan, the purple fog appears with rain, soaring and ruining our town. The evil does not drain. Find out why the town soared. Know the source of which involved. And then your case is solved. But for this town, to solve crime, we must do it.
What is the sound missing?
But if you, Mr. York, find the right timing to chat with me, that is, with Mr. Stewart, make it. In full tilt and proof, you will see. So says Mr. Stewart.
So, Harry.
Jesus Christ!
But there's some reason why you can't tell me yet. Is that what you're trying to say?
Cut the poetic rubbish, Harry, and tell us what you know. We could force you to talk, you know.
Mr. Francis York Morgan, pay close attention to the signs, the omens, and the premonitions. Small they may be, they still are finds. And helpful to... Small they may be, they still are finds and helpful to your investigations. So says Mr. Stewart. Thanks for the warning, Harry. But don't worry. Me and Zack, we know what we're doing.
It was him all along. It's Morgan. Oh, I'll take some coffee black. That's like worth thirty-five dollars here.
Agent York, are you finished asking questions yet? When you're done, let me know. We'll all get dinner.
Ooh, sounds like a fun time. Ooh, a suspect is behind this door. Hello, suspect. I assume you own the junkyard because of your look.
So you're the FBI agent, are ya?
Wow, that was a...
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
I'm the general. I fought for my country in the Vietnam War.
A real-life war hero. So why are you living here?
Soldier, this is my hometown. After a man returns from war, there's no place to go other than his hometown. In your little speech, you mentioned the raincoat killer.
Was that a problem?
You imbecile. The raincoat killer is no myth, not mere folklore, not a fairy tale. It's based on actual events that happened in this town.
It is? I'm interested. Can you tell me more about this?
You kids today don't even know how to ask for something right. Soldier, if you wanna hear more, you come to my office.
Sounds good. I'll come to the scrapyard.
He literally exudes raw power, Zack. Despite the credibility issues, we should give him a visit. One thing, though. Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
Oh, you know. Nick.
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. I presume you are the owner of the diner that Anna worked at?
That's right. Hello, Nick Cormac.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about Anna Graham. Did you notice anything strange about her prior to the incident? Nick, are you hiding something?
No, nothing.
You sure?
I'm sorry, but I don't like repeating myself. Alright. Hey, Olivia.
Can you tell me if you noticed anything strange about Anna before the incident?
Well...
I mean, other than her being really strange?
This will be of any help, but...
Anything, no matter how small, could be of help.
Well, you see, the diner closes when it rains. Many shops do that around here, as you might have heard. Anyway, Anna always seemed unfocused the day after it rained. And came in late, too. It was almost as if she used up all her energy the day before. Come to think of it, that was really strange. Did that legendary monster really kill her?
It wasn't a monster. Just a criminal. Criminal I'm going to catch and bring to justice.
Hello. Hello, snake skin pants. What the fuck?
Please, call me York.
Wesley, owner of the gun store called Panda Bear. People around here call me the gunsmith.
Okay.
Was there something you won't ask me?
How do you make a living running a gun store in a place like this? I'd be worried because there can't be that many customers.
Worry gives a small thing a big shadow. I do gunsmith work in my shop, too. If you got the skills, the customers find you. All you need is a network.
I hope so.
Oh, God, can I buy guns right here? I already have that. Oh, wow, sell me a lollipop for fifteen, fourteen, forty-five.
You've got quite a selection here. No wonder people come from all around.
Even today, a customer paid me to go to Seattle for some help. I just got back.
I see. Well, I'll be sure to visit your store sometime. I'd like for you to take a look at my gun.
Understood. Look forward to it. The shop will be open again tomorrow. It's usually open from twenty hundred to oh six hundred. See you then.
What? Yeah, I run a gun store, but it's only open at third shift hours. Like, what the fuck?
Hey, Lily.
Hi, Lily.
Agent York, your speech frightened some of us a little. You should work on being more sensitive with words when talking to groups.
No!
I tried my best to be gentle. So, have you noticed anything strange or out of place recently?
Just Becky, really. She works part-time at the store. She's been acting strange recently.
Strange, how?
I took the boys along to visit her house today. I was just worried, you know, because she hasn't come into work at all after that incident. But she took in the boys and told me to wait outside. Something about a special secret between just the three of them. I just couldn't understand it.
Now, that's interesting. Thank you, Lily. Perhaps we should give Becky a visit tomorrow, Zack.
Sounds like a plan, little man. Inside of my head.
Hey, York, you were rocking it large up there!
Was I? I haven't been on stage like that since elementary school.
You made me think, man, like, things can't go on like this. We need, like, some action or something.
Something!
I was pretty psyched up, you know, before you got on stage. I was like, dude, a real psycho in town. Pretty sweet gig. Now, I mean, dude, that lunatic could be any one of us, man.
Even me!
I don't want to think of that whack job coming after my family. Makes me shudder all over, man. It was way too heavy. You'll catch him, right, FBI?
Weren't your kids the first one to find the body? Shouldn't you be concerned about your kids?
You're right, man. Right on the level. I need to do what's right for my family, man.
Just because, like, they probably have some problems? Hey, Polly.
Mr. Morgan, you're quite an impressive public speaker.
Really? Really, my brain is made out of candy bars.
You reminded me of a little of a play I saw when I was younger.
What kind of play?
I'm talking about back when this place was still called the Mercury Theater. When I was young, I used to come here often with my husband. God rest his soul. We'd come on the weekend to see the latest play. He'd always pretend to be uninterested, but I could tell he was excited inside. He was just one of those kinda gods, really, thinking about it now.
Really, Polly? So what's your favorite play?
Oh, well, I like so many. There was one in particular, but I can't recall the name anymore. Oh, it was a very famous one, too.
Something by Shakespeare?
Oh, um... No, nothing. One more bell that doesn't ring anymore. I've always been forgetful about the plays we used to see anyway. Only my husband would get angry at me for forgetting what we saw. He'd go on for hours retelling what the play was about. His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy.
I see. So, what's your favorite play?
Oh, I almost forgot, Mr. Morgan. We're going to have another guest soon. I have to get back and get things ready. Sorry for having to hurry away. I'll see you back at the hotel.
So, what was your favorite?
Zack, I think she could embarrass the toughest of the FBI's interrogators. She successfully avoided answering my question, Zack. Amazing.
You asked one question twice. And her answer was, "I do not remember. I have no memory of that." Hello.
Oh, my. My pot is getting cold.
Oh, roaming Sigourney.
Hey, mister, my pot is getting cold.
You are...who?
What are you saying? I'm Sigourney. Sigourney!
Sigourney? Now, what is the matter? Can you explain?
No time for chatting. I need to hurry. My pot is getting colder. Oh, you're useless.
Zack, we've met all sorts today, but really, she takes the cake.
She has a house!
Amazing.
Hey, Jim. Good to see ya.
Jim, thanks for your help in the forest. How are Isaac and Isaiah?
They're fine.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Well, I guess they do, son. I wanna keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can. Their mother agrees, which is why she lets me take care of them so often. And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home. Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to in order to do my job. But I understand what you mean. I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this, Zack.
Also, that weird thing that you do where you just talk to yourself out loud.
Hello again, Agent York. How are you?
Good, thanks. And you?
Oh, I'm feeling pretty good today.
Well, that's good to hear. Do you have any information that could help me out?
Information? Sounds difficult and not my kind of conversation. Anyways, you should come by the gas stand again. I'll give you the best service in town.
Zack, perhaps you can tell me, why did she bother coming here?
I've nothing to say to you.
I haven't asked you anything yet, Jack.
Shut it! I might open up if you introduce me to, I don't know, a Ben Franklin or two.
Okay. Guess there's always someone like him in every town.
Alright, let's... Hey, it's Usher Johnson. Hey, Usher, I think Fiona's into you, the way she's staring at you in the background.
Of course, plenty. Tell me, Usher, when is Anna's funeral?
That's still undecided. Sally isn't really in any condition to do it right now.
Her mother? I don't see her here.
Anna was the sole reason for living after her husband was deceased. Well, she's probably huddled up at home.
Well, last time we saw her, she didn't seem very, uh...
And I should probably take some time to pay her a visit.
Yes, you should. And I'd appreciate it if you could, too. But don't go too hard on her, okay?
Are you getting closer to catching the murderer?
Hello again, Fiona. Good to see you here.
Well, Dr. Johnson told me to be here. He said it would be important.
Well, that was good advice. He may be young, but he seems like a wise man.
Oh, and he's a very hard-working person, too. Everyone thinks he's some kind of weirdo, but I don't think so at all. People don't understand why he's in the autopsy room all day, but I do. He's doing research to make the world a better place in the future. You know, he already made a fortune in LA with his career.
I did not know that.
I did not know that.
You didn't? Oh, the doctor is a very rich man. He has a really big house over by the lake.
Amazing, Zack. You must be loaded. Rich and young. A perfect combination.
But you don't get that feeling from him at all, do you? He doesn't show it. That's one of the things I like best about him.
Well, I could have been fooled if it weren't for you. Thanks for the valuable information, Fiona.
Sup, Usher? Where else? Oh, hi, Richard and Qu-Quint? Quint!
Quint, you're here, too. I didn't think you were the town-meeting kind of guy.
A friend of mine was killed, you know, man? I'm not letting this one go quietly. I'll do anything to help you catch the scumbag who did this.
I like the look in your eyes and the cut of your jib, Quint.
Nothing good will come from desiring simple revenge.
Oh, come on, I'm not that stupid. But I'm frustrated a bit just thinking that there's nothing I can do about it.
We each have a role, a purpose in life, a raison d'etre. Don't forget that.
I know, I know. Just don't preach to me. You're sounding like my old man.
Zack, wow. I'm in shock like a weasel in an electric chair. You just made me realize that I must be getting old.
I'm in shock like a weasel in an electric chair.
So, finding your way around, okay?
Yes, pretty much. But some people are hard to get along with.
People problems, huh? I thought city folks were used to things like that. There's lots more people in the city than there are here.
Well, that's true. But I started simplifying things a bit. Here's my new way of thinking. It's simple, really. There's only three types of people. Criminals, victims, and investigators. Everyone else are just vegetables. Vegetables called other people.
You really are strange.
Hello, suspect.
Good evening, agent.
Brian the Insomniac, the Gravekeeper.
Brian, the Gravekeeper. Brian.
Mr. Brian. I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Anna. Oh, she was so beautiful. Too soon. Too, too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here, looking for the one who did it. Were you close to her?
Anna, her smile, so warm.
Alright.
Blonde hair, so bright.
There's a graveyard somewhere in town, Zack. I'm not excited about the idea, but maybe we should at least check it out.
Whaaat? Hello, Carol. What is this, a smoking room?
Anna was an airhead.
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead even in heaven. She changed her hair every day. If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one, and she'd almost be tears. She broke many, many plates every day at the diner, and she'd always have a smile on her face, always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead. But they would be smiling right along with her. I wouldn't be surprised if the angels smiled with her, too.
Oh, God!
Isaac and Isaiah said that Anna was a fairy of the forest. I guess.
Alright. That was fucking weird.
Agent Morgan? I'd like to let him go home now. Let's go outside.
Well, I guess that was everyone, then. All these fucking weirdos and shit. Alright. Nice. Got me some salary money.
Well then, Agent York, do you have any plans for this evening?
I was going to head back to the hotel. I'm going through my notes. I need to contact HQ and give a progress report, too.
Okay, now let's call it a day here.
Sounds good. Contact my office when you finish your report. We'll pick you up tomorrow morning. Diane, the owner of the art gallery, should be back soon. Alright then, let's do that.
Hold on, Agent York. We're going out to eat at Nick's diner. Would you like to come with us?
Hell yeah!
It might be nice.
Thomas is a great cook, but Nick is the real deal. No visit to Greenville is complete without eating at the A and G.
A very appealing proposition. Zack, what do you think? We can always go back to the hotel after eating dinner, or go directly back to the hotel. You decide, Zack.
Let's eat with them. I'm sure that won't be a completely fucking weird cutscene.
I've been sheriff here for a long time now. And this is the worst murder I've ever seen.
Our town is a little odd in some ways, but it's usually a peaceful place.
We had our fair share of cases, but just the regular stuff. A high school kid shoplifting from the milk barn, maybe? Or some hot-headed kids fighting, feeling on liquor. Nothing more than that.
Agent York, what kind of cases have you dealt with in the past?
Oh, God, don't ask him things.
Not much different from those you've just mentioned. The case I was on until last month, well, the guy killed seven girls in a three-month period. He sawed their heads off from the neck and took them back to his house. He cleaned the skulls up and used them as utensils in his daily life, to eat from or as a urine cup. He hated women. That was his way of dealing with it.
Hmm.
He'd fill skulls with ice, cola, and rum, and he'd down it in one gulp. For him, that was a holy ritual.
You know, when someone wrote this script, I feel like they had a completely different image in their head.
For me, he was insane. A hundred percent. Drinking from the skulls. Well, that is pointless. But those he had used to believe himself, he would then just use them to drink from, too. Yeah, that was too much for me. It's just not sanitary.
Not sanitary? Uh, that's probably not the problem for most of us.
What is? Ah, yes. An ingenious law school student raped over a无辜 victim.
Jesus fucking Christ, guys!
Thank you, Agent York. Now, let's talk about something else.
You don't want to hear anymore? That's a shame, isn't it, Zack? I was just about to get to the good part.
What was the good part of that story?
It's like you live in a totally different world. You're like an elite agent who just jumped out from a movie or something. In your eyes, you must look like we're just playing cops and robbers. Ugh, I give up. I can't compete with you.
Don't say that, Emily. The cases you have solved are all full-fledged crimes. A crime is a crime. Size doesn't matter. There is no big and small.
Besides, you've seen this person. You don't want to emulate this guy.
No victim will ever welcome a crime, no matter what its size. So fundamentally, there is no difference in size.
You don't want to be the guy sitting there smoking in the diner talking about the case you just worked where, like, seven women were murdered and their heads were used as fucking urine cups. You don't want to be that guy. Like, what the shit?
Of course, but still, I don't view shoplifting and Anna's murder as the same level of crime.
Me, neither. I never even dreamt that such a thing could ever even happen in this town. I keep on expecting to see Anna here in this diner, waiting on tables.
Excuse us, Agent Morgan. We should have made dinner a more uplifting experience. Let's call it a night. Okay. Good night, then.
Okay! Do, do, do! Fuck, man. This is... I don't think we've been to Galaxy of Terror yet. Let's go there. Where are we going from there? Alright. A left at the second turn. Then a right. At the second right. So, second left, second right. Cool.
Zack, we can take a rest. Time.
Jesus Christ. Alright. I'm pretty sure we haven't been here before. Is this place called... Galaxy of Terror. Nice. Galaxy of Terror, sounds like my kind of weird place. Don't know what it is, but kinda looks like it might be a bar based on that logo. Uh, this is not what I was expecting. Kid had to choose a raincoat killer? Told you. That was nothing but folklore.
Start with me, George.
Can I just go in here? Alright, looks almost brand-new with no problems. Hmm. Probably shouldn't try to get in here. Go ahead and tell them the local cops are giving you problems. Oh, hey, Carol. Jesus Christ. Well, thank you. Happy now? No, not quite. What in the shit? York sucks, man. York's a dick. If you really like my song, then get the hell out of here. Alright, bye. Man, look at that stretchy cat over there. Dana, you enjoying your new bed? That's just a happy cat over there. I guess I can't go through this door, though. Alright, I will be right back. I'll let y'all look at this pretty little screen for a hot second. I'm back! Alright. Let's, uh... Hmm. Oh, you know what? I bet Swary is open again. So, we should go to Swary. Where am I? Alright, we'll take a right on which street? That street. Wait, this doesn't look right. Oh, no, that's right. Oh, no, that's right. Wait, it's fine. So it does give you a little bit of a speed boost. Oh yeah, I have to go and talk to him too. That might be a better thing to do tomorrow though. Oh yeah, the gun store's probably open now. Well, maybe we'll catch it on the way back. Hey Quinn. Need to talk to you.
Yeah?
It's my dad's place. Someday, I'm going to be a top-notch bartender here. Huh. Shit. Well, mean. A gimlet. Dry martini and a matador. Barbecue salmon? I'm just thinking of fish with barbecue sauce and that does not sound great.
Yeah?
Fine, I'll have one of your drinks. Wait, drinking alcohol makes you less sleepy? What the fuck? Hang on. Shaken, not stirred. There, are you happy now?
Yeah.
I see. Hey! 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 Damn it! Hey! Hey Sally. What you up to? You know, we already had this conversation. Although once she hung out with Carol. Children get, grow up so fast. Yeah, Becky, Quinn, um, and Carol.
Anna?
Alright. Well, I guess I was wrong. Nothing really here. We'll stop at Panda Bear. We'll stop at Panda Bear, just see what's going on there. Then we'll head back to the hotel. Maybe we'll get some gas too.
Zach, we can take a rest in time.
Third shift gun store. Alright. Panda Bear. Hey Wesley.
Hmm.
Come to see what you're selling. You have a really good reputation. Don't trust what you hear out there. Information can be totally controlled in this day and age. I'm well aware of that. But I can smell the difference. It's important in my line of work. Information smells bad when it's fake. Oh wow, so there's really just no point for me to be here right now?
You've got quite a selection here.
There you go.
No wonder people come from all around.
Compliments do nothing. I strive to meet my ideals. Others may judge my results.
Words of a true craftsman. Your job must be your hobby.
No, I have another hobby.
You do? Aside from work? Tell me then, what is it?
It's nothing special. Since I was a kid, I always liked to collect cards.
Cards? Like trading cards?
That's right.
That reminds me. I got this one after I came to this town.
Hmm, this is a precious one. Where did you get it?
I picked it up around here somewhere. I didn't really think much of it.
I see. Then how about a trade?
A trade?
Here's an idea. As a collector, I just love looking at rare cards. I'd love to take a look at the cards you have. I won't take them from you. And I'll give you something, depending on how many you show me.
You'll pay me just to look at my cards?
Huh.
You really must be a card freak, huh?
Let's check it out.
Will you show me your cards? Of course.
Oh?
You've got more than eight. I've never seen any of them before. I appreciate you showing them to me. Here's a little something, as promised.
Hey!
If you find any new cards, come show them to me, will you?
Ooh, sixteen cards. I could get a moderate thank you from Wesley?
Hmm? Wait, looks like you got a few more cards. Show them to me.
How many cards do I have?
Looks like you have more than sixteen here. That's very impressive. I appreciate you showing them to me.
How many cards do I have?
Here's a little something, as promised.
Ah, Panda Bear card.
Hold on to it, okay? If you find any new cards, come show them to me, will you?
A normal collector, ooh. Thirty-two cards and I can get a big thank you from Wesley. I guess I don't have that many cards. How many cards do I have? Oh, I have eighteen. What's that? Oh. That's fun. Well, it looks like I can't get my big thank you from Wesley yet. Huh, what the fuck do I get out of this place? Alright, it's pretty close to midnight. We should probably get the fuck outta here. We'll stop and get some gas, if we can. I'm kinda hungry. Or am I?
Nothing, just my imagination.
Hmm, well, that's okay. Oh, they're closed. Alright, well, no gas today. I can't believe nobody told me that I was covering up our, our watch. Nobody could tell what time it was this whole time. Man. Hmm, that's okay though. Ooh. Make that nineteen. Oh, fuck. Never mind, looks like can't get to it from here. And I don't wanna fuck around for too long, cuz midnight is when... It gets dark out. We don't want it to get dark out on us. We'll take the Powell Bridge. We'll take the Powell Bridge.
Zack, if you notice anything, just stop.
Honestly, I'm pretty tired. So, we might call it a night after... This. I mean, we, we've gone over an hour and a half, I'm... I'm sorry guys, I just haven't been feeling it tonight, I'm just very tired. Still have to go to work tomorrow. Eh, it's fine. Maybe, maybe it's not, who knows? Hey, we'll at least go to our room and stuff, and do all of our morning routine and everything in the game, of course. I'm not gonna, like, I'll probably still be on for like fifteen, twenty more minutes, so, don't have to worry.
So, where shall we go next?
Is this the right way?
Yeah.
Uh oh. Holy shit, he's looking rough. I guess what I should say now is-
Okay, Zack.
-next chance I get to save.
Let's go back over our progress. First the victim, Anna's death. She was found hanging from a tree in the forest. She was cut open with a knife-
Are we just gonna do this in black?
That was the direct cause of death. Strangulation marks, skull fracture were caused after death. Her tongue was also bit off, I found something inside her mouth.
Yeah?
Do you remember what that was, Zack?
A red seed. Oh, lollyfob.
We found the same red seed in her mouth. According to Emily, it was blamed on Anna's guilt, but traces of tears were still evident. Which means the perpetrator killed Anna under a roof in the lobby. And carried her body into the woods after his death. We found numerous important pieces of evidence at the site of the crime. Total of four things. Knee prints in the grass, wood chip covered in metal flakes.
Holy fuck!
Photo of a man with a tattoo on his back. One other thing. Do you remember what that was, Zack?
Was it that?
It's wrong, Zack, come on, try again.
Uh...
Knee prints in the grass, wood chip covered in metal flakes. Photo of a man with a tattoo on his back.
Was, was it the, the stiletto?
That's right, a broken stiletto heel.
Alright, I thought we found that in the forest though.
Two people came into contact with Anna's body prior to it being discovered by us. Those being the perpetrator who killed Anna, Miss Stiletto Heel. There is also the possibility that a third party carried Anna to the woods. That means we could be dealing with three people.
Well, Becky's at, acting pretty strange, so...
In any case, Miss Stiletto Heel may have vital information. We need to find her next. Didn't use forensic methods, but we're still closing in on the criminal. Have I forgotten anything?
Hmm.
Ah, of course. The marks on her hand tell us that Anna was gripping something when she died. Do you remember that, Zack?
Yes.
What do you think she was holding on to?
A round object.
Round object. The marks on her hands suggest a peace mark. The man in the photo found in the woods had a tattoo of an upside down peace mark on his back. These two could probably be related. But we don't know for sure.
See?
Few are worthy of special attention. Carol McLean, singer and bar owner, she's Tom's sister. Then there's Nick Carmichael, owner of the bar. Both of them seem to be hiding something. There's Diana, owner of the art gallery, was out of town.
Hmm.
Then we have problematic, cold, rich, and eccentric Harry. All four be tough to crack. We just have to go one by one. I've been thinking, one of the biggest rewards here is the fantastic food.
Yeah, we got jumbo, I-
Enjoying food is cultural, and yet it's also a bit uncivilized. It's interesting how good food motivates me to work harder during investigations. Oh, and on Emily's back... It was strange to me. Hey, don't take that the wrong way, Zack, I wasn't getting all excited or anything. But it did make me feel... Strange. Nostalgic, sad almost.
Uh oh.
It's starting to rain. I think this case may take a while.
Hey, tree guy! We've been here for four days? Nice. I wish I got paid as much as this guy. Holy shit!
Are you thirsty? You must be very thirsty. You only take milk with your coffee? Coffee with milk, that's all.
That's not true, I drink black coffee, you guys suck. Costs thirty-five dollars.
Who are you?
That's Carol.
My name is Becky.
Oh, wait, I guess it's not.
What are you doing here?
My name is Becky.
We, we never met, sir.
My name is Becky.
Your throat is clenched. You must do what you must do.
Is it kill, Becky?
Take a sip of coffee, and go.
Hey, challenge shipper, episode two. Well, that's nifty. Huh. I guess we open this one. Well, I can't interact with the other one. Oh god, why, fucking tank controls, man.
That's me! That's me when it happened.
When what happened? York!
Zack, this case looks like it's directly related to us. I do not know how yet. But I do know I need some coffee. George said he'd have someone pick us up in the parking lot. Let's get some breakfast with Polly first.
Alright.
Alright. I'm gonna head out, guys, thank you for joining me. Have a great night, morning, whatever you're feeling today. And... Farewell.